Let's jump right in, everybody. Welcome to the budget workshop on March 25th. Thank you. We're gonna go right into and dive right into the updated information regarding expenditures and revenues, starting with the modular lease numbers, the updates on that.
Yeah, so I, there were two pieces of information the school committee asked me to get. We're doing the course of last budget meeting. So the first one was some updated information on the Narragansett modular leases. And then the other was updated information on the school resource officer and the actual cost there. The easier one to just tell you is really on the agenda there. The school resource officer position originally was listed at 63 in the budget, but I did double check with Chief Jones, and that would be 73. The initial estimate we developed was way back in October, so that stands to reason it might have gone up a little bit. So that's at 73. And as noted in the summary sheet, which we'll talk about here in a second, that's in there, $73,000 at this point, due to your vote from the last meeting. So, onto the more complicated conversation around the leases that we're looking at for Narragansett, Sycamore, FY '20. If you remember, you all have to have that colored picture in your mind, right? If not, there is a map of that on your resource list on the agenda if you need to refer to it again. But what we're talking about here is really the cost for the first phase only, the blue items that were on that list. So, got some updated figures, and this is what we talked about last time. There were some changes to those figures. As you know, we had originally budgeted similar funds for these modules as what we had budgeted for the village and the high school modules that we got last year. Those numbers have changed, as has everything that seems in the current construction climate. And what we have now is looking at a lease directly from SCAB. For the first eight to 12 months, the price would go, could go as low as $5,700. That is basically the floor that they created. I think that's probably reasonable too, understanding that that first year we're likely not gonna occupy any of the spaces within those modules. So they were willing to go to $5,700 per month, which would be approximately $68,400 per year. Then after that, when they would be then occupied or geared up to being occupied, the cost would jump to about $7,400 for the next 48 months, which would roughly be $88,800 per year. Additionally, there would be some fees needed for delivery, setup, and installation and tie downs. That could be anywhere between $65,000 to $68,000, although we can probably reserve that within the capital budget as it currently exists. That's not something I would necessarily add a lot to at this point. And just for due note and discussion, we've had this discussion on several different occasions, but I think it's worth it to do it again, which is the discussion around the purchase price for the leases, for the modules versus leasing. The purchase price would be $495,425 for that same series of three modules. So it's for that same, whenever I'm talking about this, those costs are for the three sort of groupings of the modules together. So that blue in your line, that whole blue section other than the connecting cord or most kind of things. So then, when you're looking at them, the lease costs, I put it out for five years. So it's a five-year lease with the option to buy at market value at the end of those five years. That would be how we would set it up. So you'd have a lease for year one of about $68,400. Then each of the years afterwards, two through five, you'd have a lease at $88,800. And then, and that's just the blue component. You know, when we get into the green, that would be an additional amount for leases at that point in time. So the total lease cost for five years, if you add it all together, would be $423,600. Then I did a quick calculation just for comparisons purposes, so you could see the differential between the lease option and the buying option, which people, you know, it is more cost efficient to buy if you can. And so, if you assume the depreciation of those modules at 10%, that would mean the market value would be roughly somewhere between $325, might go a little bit lower for, at the end of those five years. So in order to buy at that point, you'd be, you'd have paid already $423,000 in leases, and then you would be purchasing on top of that in the amount of $320,000. So clearly, if you can, the best option is to purchase upfront. Now, we've had that conversation, and right now, the way that we have it in the budget is for leasing for those five years, with the option to buy at market value at the end of five years. And we've done that for several different discussions around the fact that we would have to, well, we'd have to increase the SIPs budget significantly, or we'd have to ask the town to bond that amount, which it's only going to do at this point. So, that is where we are. I will know, I will know later on in the spring, when we get closer to the end of the school year, we'll be able to apply for, hopefully, those funds from the Department of Education to help offset costs for the lease. It won't be a full offset, but it'll be some funds that would come back to us in FY '21 once we're approved as part of that program for leases through the Department of Education. So I don't know if that helps answer the questions that existed during the last meeting. It's certainly as much information as I can get at this point in time on the leases. You know, we are still pursuing the possibility of leasing through GORM savings instead of directly through SCAB. We are not optimistic at this point that that may occur just because of some of the difficulties we had in doing the two leases that we did do last year with through GORM savings because of the uniqueness of the type of lease that we were looking for. So, it may or may not work out. We hope we still can do it. If we can, then it would be less than that amount. What I provided for you here is basically worst-case scenario.
Any questions? Jen?
First year, I was saying three portables.
Right. It's three modular class modules, and they're put together. There's only four classrooms in them though, because then in the other, in the other modular, it would be a bathroom or restroom area and all the wiring and interior stuff.
So follow-up then. So year one, I'm not sure why it's $68,400. Then if it's only three modules, wouldn't it be three times $5,700?
They gave us a little break.
They gave us the first year break because we're not occupying. And also, that's looking at the whole, that's looking at the group. That's what they quoted for the group, that group of three.
So we'd be paying for, I still thought, I'm just...
We're paying for the group of three. That blue space, all of the blue.
And so for three of them, it's $68,400?
Yes.
And then year two, it's $8,400?
The three.
Okay, so then addition would be, we are adding more on year two.
No, 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 no. This is just the blue. Don't even think about the green.
We had talked about going back to SCAB and seeing if they'd give us any sort of a break because we're not going to be occupying. So they gave us a little bit of a break in year one. But since we're gonna be fully occupying them in year two, we're paying the regular, whatever the cost.
I guess I'm confused by the $5,700 per month.
Could be as low as $5,700 per month for her portable.
No, it's for the group of three. It's for the group of three.
And how do we get that $5,700 versus $68,400?
$5,700 times 12 is $68,400.
Twelve months.
Are you asking why the first three, the first year is different than the other years? No, I got it, I got it now. I was thinking, yeah.
No, other costs is a monthly cost, and we just added it up times 12.
And is it possible to, for us to, you know, just get started with what we have now and bond the rest of it, like maybe in November?
The way that I've, the way that I've written the question on the referendum that is gonna be brought to the town council next week is, it leaves it open for the possibility of bonding.
Yes.
But it also asks for the approval to expend the full amount of both Phase One and Phase Two.
Conversation at the workshop.
Yes, we'll be talking about that specifically for the workshop Wednesday night.
So what would be, what we would need to approve for the budget? Because I don't think we actually voted on anything. It would be the $68,000 for...
Yeah, so what you'll notice when we go, if you go back to your agenda and you click on the updated summary sheet, don't look at the front page, scroll all the way to the bottom. We'll get to the front page. If you scroll all the way to the bottom, what you'll notice is that we've added, because we only had 26 something in the original budget. I think 26,000 in the original budget. We added 46,000, so that that 60 amount is in there. And then, so that the full amount for what we might potentially do for leases is in the, in the proposed budget would be summary numbers. So when you go back to the top then, you can see with all that calculated in. So what I've done in this, in this summary sheet is I've included the leases and I've included also the SRO position that we talked about. And so with that inclusion in there, your total expenditures are now at 6.87% increase over the last year, which is an increase of $2.6 million, which, when you look at the revenues down below, that is, with factoring in about roughly a $25 million increase in property tax base, you're at a 9.6% increase on the mill, which is $1.15. And again, that's all estimates.
I guess one of the things I'm really nervous about is we're bringing this to the town council and the chances of saying that we're gonna cut a certain amount. And what are we, are we gonna have a conversation about what would be cut?
After, so the, the plan for tonight is finish what we've talked about, and then we're gonna discuss the budget as a whole with the summary page and see with, where the school committee is. If the, if four members of the school committee are comfortable with the number as it is and willing to, or ready to vote on that in our April meeting, then we straw poll it, and then we're done the meeting, and it goes to the vote at the school committee level in April. If not, we dive back in and start having a conversation as to what we pull out, what we wanna pull out. It's not something, I don't see it as something that we give back to the district leadership team because they already gave us the initial list. So it's all on us as to what we take out or add back in at that time. So this was the only item that we had left to vote on that's been in our list that we've talked about that was still up for a vote, whether we were gonna add this or not.
I guess my one thought is, I feel that we're kinda stuck with doing the lease because of where we are in the process and the timing of it. So I'm supportive of it because I believe that we need this. And I think on Wednesday, when we discuss the rest of the project, we should focus on how can we make this into a bond or something so that it, maybe we have the opportunity to buy, et cetera. Because I know we had the same discussion about leasing and buying when we did the village and high school ones. So, I'm supportive of putting it in there, but I think that we could maybe better plan next time.
Any other questions or comments? So can we get a poll of school committee members? As to thumbs up is leaving, is leaving, or putting all three modules into the budget, which is already reflected on the summary report.
Right.
Correct.
Thumbs down would be to remove from the budget the port, uh, modules.
So there's no middle ground, it's three or none?
What we have right now, it's three or none.
Well, I think part of the issue was that you need that one for the bathrooms and the, like, electrical stuff.
So, thoughts of the school committee?
I'm trying to throw it out there. Do we even wanna entertain a discussion on what this would look like if we bought the portals? We're buying, we're paying, we're getting three portals and we're paying for six.
Just about, yeah.
That's not responsible use of our money, the taxpayers' money.
I really like to get to a bond, you're saying it's absolutely too late to be on just...
For June, it is.
I mean, we're doing a referendum question in June to allow the expenditures to... We have to have a whole separate conversation with the town council about bonding.
And the issue they had with the bonding piece of it, with the conversation we had is bonding for three portables at 400 and whatever amount is way too low of a number for us to be bonding.
Well, why not? I thought it was $1 million for the whole project.
When you look at Phase One and Two, and when you look at the question again, this is going to Wednesday night for both phases, one and two would be 1.8 million.
I mean, why not bond that, just the entire project?
Wasn't it more of a timing issue than it is anything?
A lot of it's a timing issue.
Right.
Well, I mean, some of this goes back to the guidance we had last year, which was, don't bond it. You gotta leave it, put it in the operational budget. We're not gonna buy any portals. So that was the direction we got last year. I think we've all come to a conclusion that it's not the best way to, we're not gonna speak for everybody else. But we've talked about other options. And according to our meeting last week with the town council, I think they're more willing to listen to other options as well going forward. This ties into our joint committees that we're gonna have to look at a way ahead. What are we gonna prioritize and so forth? I just don't know if we can get that done before.
Jen?
And the town, the $250,000 limit, that would stop us from just buying.
Correct.
We can't buy them without, yet, without...
You have to have a referendum, any purchase whatsoever.
Okay, I couldn't, yeah, okay, I wasn't sure.
Yeah.
What if we put it in the budget as a lease, and then next year, we did something to buy? I mean, can we buy it out, the lease?
You could buy out the lease, but you're going to be in that situation with the $250,000 for the, for the charter language. If you wanted to directly purchase these modules and not bond it, your only option at this point would be to add it to the operating budget and add it to that referendum question that we're already putting forward to request approval from the taxpayers to fund the project. Because again, that question is not asking for bonding authority. It's asking for authority to spend money. So you could change it so the whole amount reflected the infrastructure and the modules, but you'd also have to add the money to your operating budget.
As it is right now, we've left it open so that we had planned on the first phase being purchased through the SIPs and leasing that first phase. And then we'd sort of left it open that if we wanted to purchase outright Phase Two, we could do that, but we'd have to look at some bonding at that point. And then maybe you could wrap in the first, the first phase as well, but you've already paid leases out at that point. And is it a full five years? Or do you have an option to buy market value at the end of each year?
With, I have, I believe we have an option to buy, and I'm not sure, Norm, do you?
I don't.
Do you know? So with our current leasing that we have through GORM leasing, and this is where it's a little, I'm a little unsure because we, we don't know it will be leasing with SCAB or GORM leasing. With GORM leasing and the two modules we just put in, village and the high school, we have an option to purchase each year at fair market value. I'm not sure if that's the same with SCAB. But it is, it is an option.
Something to definitely think about for next year, if it's a possibility.
I think minimally, you should look at the second phase being purchased outright, minimally. And then if there's a possibility to try to wrap in the first phase and purchase after the year of a lease, then you should look, try to do that too. Timing right now, I think prevents you from doing that for Phase One.
And it always seems to be a timing issue because, you know, we're trying to include capital expenditures in an operating budget. So, I mean, that begs to the whole conversation of, you know, this one project is taking up so many resources that it affects, it ripples through the rest of the school district. So, we can't continue to have these huge capital expenditures to accommodate the growth and use the operating budget to do that, in my opinion. It's not an operational expenditure, it's a capital expenditure. So, I think, but we can't wait around for people to decide that, how to pay for this and go through the whole bonding process because, you know, we'll be years behind, and it'll just continue to snowball. So I mean, I would support going through with it now and including it as a lease, and maybe we can do something about it next year. And if we, you know, I mean, to Stuart's point, it's, you're right, we're paying for six portables, but we don't have the option. We don't really have the money to buy it outright.
Right, at least if we only lease it for one year, it's not as much of a loss if we can buy it off.
And then, here's the potential with the discussion with council, if you were to do a bond for this fall. Because I don't anticipate these, if we order them after voter referendum, these not coming in until October, November. So at that point, you could change your agreement with SCAB to a purchase if you were to bond.
We're not paying for them until we get them.
We don't, we don't pay for them till we get them.
We would need to increase the total amount that we're asking for approval for purchasing because right now, that, the lease amounts are withdrawn, the portable costs themselves are withdrawn from that referendum question because they are in leasing, which would be the operating budget. So if you wanted to do that, then you would need to, you need to increase the total on the question.
So I'm suggesting you include leasing in your operating as you're discussing, and have a council discussion about bonding these in November.
So we'll go as planned right now, but then revisit the conversation with the council.
Totally different members.
Okay, because it's a bond, it would be a separate referendum question?
Right.
Because otherwise, you wouldn't have approval to expend the total, no?
Right.
We're all saying the same thing, just thereabouts.
Right, and it brings a whole other issue of, like, we can never, we're never gonna be able to replace all the heat pumps at the middle school out of our operational budget without having, you know, astronomical increase. And, you know, that would be something that would probably be bonded, could be bonded.
Right.
Probably shouldn't.
Right, and I would be in favor in November if we're gonna go to a bond, let's bond what we need. And by that point, we've got a better answer on where we are with the high school project and everything else, which we don't think, probably go to a bond in November anyway now. Might, but...
Still.
It is open. But that, I mean, at least that's an option at that point.
Plus, then, with the referendum question, if that gets approved, it kinda gives us a sense of where the town is, that town's bought it. If they're supporting that, then, then they're supporting, you know, and how we pay for it is, we can worry about that after.
Right, because we're really gonna have to make sure to explain to the public that we're not buying these same portables twice. Not this 1.8 million plus that, we're just changing the funding sources of it in November, making sure that that is well understood.
Well, I think that taxpayers need to know, we need to know what their priorities are as well. You know, if we're gonna, if we try to bond this and it doesn't pass, then it's apparent that the voters are not supporting capital improvements to the buildings. And it seems to me that, kind of the climate is that these voters have children in school, and they don't wanna see a class of 30. They wanna, but if you don't expand the building, then that's what's gonna happen, so...
Any other questions or discussion on that before we take a poll? All right, poll of the school committee? I'm keeping them in? And Heather, that's, that is indeed in there already.
It's already in the summary.
Okay, so, we've gone through all of our lists. Now it's time to look at what the final numbers are.
I have one more question, dear.
Yep.
Heather, back when you mentioned the new price part, cost, on the SRO position. I assume that, that means the chief is okay with still going with that position if we decide to...
Yeah, and just so you know, he, he had moved forward with, we had talked about this back in October. And when I initially told, let him know that I was not including it in my initial budget, he had gone a slightly different path and was requesting from his budget a community liaison position, which he saw as serving some of this role, not quite as much as we had originally talked about, but a portion of this type of role. And so we had sort of put that in. So what we're doing right now is we're sort of saying, okay, we don't know exactly what's gonna wind up happening regardless, so let's, we'll put it in the school's budget, but hang on to it in the town's request as well. And we don't need one, but, you know, we'll see what happens down the road because it may not be, you know, we'll see.
Sure, okay, I just wanted to be sure that that conversation...
Oh yeah, he's very supportive of the actual position itself, yeah.
Thank you. Sorry, Heather, but I didn't ask that earlier.
So if we pass the point where we're able to revisit any of them?
I guess the conversation, before we get to revisit that, is let's look at the numbers where the school committee is comfortable. And I would like to straw poll on the overall number to see if we need to go back in and revisit any of them. So we see the number. Spenses are up 6.47%, or two point, a little over 2.5 million dollars. The local tax, local appropriation, looks, and these are all estimates, so these are not final numbers. Or not really estimates, but...
They're very...
Approximations, very, very close approximation. Local appropriation's going to go up over 11.2%. 2.2, almost 2.5 million. And the mill rate increase is almost 9.6% to, or $8.15. So, any thoughts, questions?
Just have a...
I got one question. I was trying to find the, the overall increase in student population for this year. And I couldn't find it. I know it's in there somewhere, I just couldn't pull it up. I was just trying to, sorry.
Let me see if I can give you a quick, a quick recollection.
So we're looking at for 1920, a relatively low one, actually 33 students total increase in next year over the previous year.
Out of a total population of...
So, we're projecting to be at, right now, we are at 2,786 students, K through 12, right? We are projecting to grow by 33 across K through 12 to 2,819. But you need to understand, I think another way to look at that might be to look at your, no, it's actually all, it's all on the elementary level, when you look at the numbers.
So that's about a 1.5% increase in student population?
Oh, I have to do that?
All right.
I'll do it.
Can I do it on my head?
I can't do it. That's 1.2.
Who says the graduated senior class?
Uh...
Just under 20.
Actually, it's... Yeah, so a little under 200.
Sorry, Heather, could you just say those numbers one more time? The total number now of students?
Total number of students as of October 1?
Yes.
And don't just now, yeah, different... October 1 is 2,786 students. We're projecting to go to 2,819 students, which is an increase of 33 students, which is about 1.2%.
Maybe a lot more for you to think, we're talking about K-5, elementary level?
Actually, no, when I'm looking at that, I'm looking over at the K-5 level. When I say a lot more, it is all at the K-5 level. We're actually going down in our sixth year full population.
So I guess what I'm saying is if we did a percentage of the increase in population at just K-5...
Oh, then that's a different percent. Oh yeah, that would be, that would be your 33, and that would be divided by a much lower number. That would be 2.6%.
So if you look at our operating budget increasing by 5.47%, because I mean, it, it's kinda hard to look at the total budget with the capital stuff in there 'Cause I mean, it, it's kind of hard to look at the total budget with the capital stuff in there, because it really skews everything. So at 5.47 percent, of which, I don't know what the, we, we have something built in for the, um, contract. Just estimate, I don't know what it is, but maybe 3 percent, so that's really not a huge increase.
Well, when you look at that top operating number, it's, the total increase is 1.9 million dollars. We know that just status quo is a little over a million dollars. So basically, you're actually only increasing your operating budget by, you know, 900,000, let's say. When we look.
No, but I mean, you know, we can't really, the whole capital piece is just blows everything right out of the water, so.
So I agree with taking the capital piece out of it, but, and I understand that the, some of the increase on the operating side is built in because of the contracts, but we can't just say that we have no control over the contracts, I mean, that's something we have to look at. A 5.47 percent increase in operating budget with a 1.2 percent increase in student population, or a 2 percent increase at the K five, I mean, you can't, that's, that trajectory is going in an unsustainable way. So maybe reasons for it, and that's fine, but.
Just for fun, I took that 900,000 dollar figure, did you? And I did the percent increase, it's about 2.5 percent increase overall, which is actually right about the 2.6 percent of the K through five population increase.
You can make and tell, y'all, kinds of stuff.
Also, that's the target.
The original target.
That was supposed to include.
That's including a bunch, a bunch of stuff. Yeah. Any further discussion? So how's the school committee feeling with what's presented? Poll, are we good to move this forward to a vote in April? So thumbs up is to move forward with a vote, thumbs down means we have further discussion. I had one person stick there.
You know what, I'm so torn, because seeing a 9.59 percent increase on the mill rate, I, it's just, but at the same time, I know what's in this budget, and I know we definitely need this project at Narragansett, so I'm just really torn.
We need some guidance.
I, I would support it, because we need to move the conversation along. And, you know, we could stay here till April's meeting, and discuss who to, what to take out, what to put in, and what to take out, what to put in. I mean, it's all good stuff, and we're still never gonna get down to where, you know, a reasonable amount, 'cause we just, we're putting money into, a million bucks into the Narragansett site work, you know, if we're gonna. So I just think that we, we need to make a decision and just move on with it, and let the process work itself out.
All right, I'm convinced, Kyle.
All right.
I will say, though, I, just because somebody doesn't vote to move this forward, doesn't mean that they want it to go down.
Right, it could be for just further discussion. All this vote would be is to move the, move this forward to an actual vote in, at our April business meeting.
So given further discussion on other items?
Right.
And I would, if I could just say one thing, which is around the April meeting, not tonight, tonight you guys do what you need to do, but the April meeting, now, I'm not saying that you have to have a unanimous vote on the budget, 'cause you don't. But there are messages that are sent by the votes that occur on April 10th. So just be mindful of the message that you wanna send on April 10th.
And we'll have that conversation about what, if we get cuts, what we, after.
The, so the conversations, I guess how, how we had the superintendent handle it last year, I think would be very similar, correct me if I'm wrong.
So if you remember the other.
We had a tier, we had a tiered approach in preparation, because we can't go into the night of the council meeting unprepared.
Right.
So the superintendent and the district leadership team would have the tiered approach that they did last year. Again, understanding that if the council cuts X, this is what's gonna be cut. Can't be SIPs, we know that that's not gonna be it, so it's gonna be programmatical. And I, I would guess that they would first go back and revisit the priority list that they had, but also take into consideration the conversations that the school committee had, because I think the school committee gave, gave some pretty good ideas as to what our priorities are, um, moving forward. So those priority lists, that may change and may shift, it may not. But that would be the process that they would go through, and then we would talk about that, um, and those lists, because we need to be on board for that prior to going to the town council, because we wanna be able to provide town council with that information, saying, again, if you cut X number, this is what it would do, and the school committee is fully prepared to vote that this is what it would do, and not making changes at that. So it's more of a not, we're bluffing, we're just gonna say it's this and do something else, it's, this is really what it's going to be. And I think that worked well last year, just the, the process itself, um, just having that ready and, okay, this is what they did, this is what we did, and it makes that very quick meeting we have to have the night after the council votes, not la, the night of that vote, sorry. After their meet, or after they do their actual vote and we go upstairs to talk, it keeps us from being there for the next 24 hours trying to figure out what the heck we're gonna do.
I think we also need to not be viewed, it's not even, it's not a threat either.
Right.
We're not bluffing, it's not a threat.
Right.
If we are gonna vote on a budget, and the town councils, they, they vote based off of what's in the budget, so if somebody's gonna make a decision to cut something out of the budget, they need to know what that budget's gonna look like after this. It's, you know, I don't want people thinking that we're, we're threatening. It was pretty clear last year how we, you know, this is what we felt, you know, based off of priorities, could, we could afford to lose. It doesn't make it any easier, but we should be upfront with what our intentions are.
Yep, and I think it did, they, they knew going into it, and that's the same thing we would tell them again in this year. I think they understand the process that we're going through, um, and coming to that. But I just wanna, I just wanna make sure that it, that as the superintendent and district leadership team are putting that list together, don't look for that priority list backing, backing it up and going up as being, well, we'll just cut that way. They're gonna take into consideration other things that we have, we have discussed as well. So I just wanted to make sure the school committee was aware that something that was a lower priority at the beginning when they gave it to us may be a higher priority based on our conversations we had around the table.
So their direction was not to cut the SIPs budget, is that still the direction? Because they said that last year.
I'm, we can cut the SIPs budget.
We can't cut the SIPs budget, the Narragansett. That's all the Narragansett, that's the Narragansett project is, is the SIPs budget.
There's really only two items in your SIPs budget this year, the site work for the Narragansett project and 30,000 dollars for fire.
Well, what did they say, cut the Narragansett project?
Well, so I think it's illegal for them to say what exactly to cut.
Yeah, they can't tell us what, where we have to cut, they can only give us a dollar amount.
And they can certainly imply, but they cannot outright tell us what to and what to not cut.
'Cause they have to vote that that's, had the meeting in April about putting the referendum question on the ballot.
They do have to vote in April to put the referendum question on the ballot.
Right, so the other, I mean, I guess the other way to go would be to, if they, if we did get that, and if they implied that, would just be to cut it out of the budget and then reintroduce it as a, as a separate project, and say, now we're bringing this to you to pass Narragansett, because we need classrooms, and you need to pass it as a separate bond, which is what we, you know, some of us have been talking about, you know, so. But that, that would be another way to go.
It could, yes.
Especially if the referendum comes out as a yes, right, and it's clear that the town wants to do that. Maybe they just don't agree with how we did it, so.
There goes my schedule. Norm's just sitting there going, okay, clear the calendar.
You're passing those because. As it is because of the size of this and everything, you know, Norm's really not doing a lot until June, and the referendum has, so we're losing a couple of months in the spring, it could, what could be happening, so he's already delaying.
Yeah, we just do an engineering and we'll be bidding it in anticipation of it.
So this conversation, I just feel this is the time to bring it up, is I am not comfortable having absolutely no other money in our sixth budget, because of what if something happens that we need to pay for, so.
There is an amount in Norm's operating budget that is for sort of the emergency stuff that pops up. So I wouldn't say that we're completely, you know, with both hands tied behind our backs kind of stuff.
And we do have an option to go to town.
Oh, you always have that option.
The town is an emergency fund also.
You do, yes, you always have that option as well.
Yeah.
Because, because, because we cut it out of the budget.
Right, okay.
And this came up, and, and we knew that this was probably one of the things that we might have to deal with.
Yeah.
We now need to pay for it, and we can, so we need to ask for money from the town. So.
And I guess if we straw poll, I'm okay with.
Moving forward?
I'm nodding, 'cause I wanna see what Stuart had said, did he want to discuss?
It's 3-3. Bill, we need your, we need your decision.
Yeah, I'm concerned that the discussion is gonna be to add more stuff back in.
We all have our reasons for voting.
Think about it, look who's, look who suggested.
I don't know, I don't know, I, I wouldn't be able to guess, Stuart.
We can go forward.
Moving in, okay, so this will come up for, for ratification vote at the April meeting. And with that, our budget meeting's done.
So, okay, just to clarify, Heather, you were going to prepare what might be possible cut scenarios?
So I'm not gonna do that for a while, just because what, what we did last year, if you remember correctly, sort of the process it played out, was that we had our joint meeting with the town council in May, which we have planned for this May, May 14. At that meeting, we were pretty good about sort of eking out of them a feeling of what they might tolerate for the total budget.
Yeah.
And I think that that's a similar thing that we ought to do this year, is try to get from them what they feel is, you know, a target, um, from their perspective, which is a different perspective, mind you, but still a very valid one. And with that information, then I could provide or create a tiered sort of system of options based on that information. But I need some sort of target.
Right, okay, and then the whole school committee review that, if I remember.
Correct.
It did.
Because we need to approve, we need to basically approve that list, so when it goes to the town council and it's presented that way, we're behind it, it's.
You straw polled it, you did.
Right, don't vote.
You vote that night, right.
We poll on it.
So one, one reminder for that night, because we were caught off guard last year, the school committee members want to share with the town council their, their individual feedback on it. They gave us that opportunity last year, and I don't think any of us were expecting it.
Right.
They gave us, you know, a chance to, to speak about the, the budget, so. There's something to keep in the back of your mind, if you feel strongly about something, you know, once we, you know, once we vote on it, you know, our vote would try to support that, but I think that there's, you know, some words of encouragement for the process that we've gone through and, and how we've gotten to this point, so. I'd like to think that they have followed along and know what goes into building a budget like this. But certainly could always use a reminder.
Do you have another question?
No. Any other questions or thoughts about next steps? All righty, we're adjourned.